Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present at this time. We'd like to welcome those of you who are with us tonight in the audience, as well as those who may be joining and watching with us tonight on City 56. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. I've asked Councilmember Kelly if it'd lead us an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Critten. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Father in heaven, dear Lord, I thank you again for the privilege of living on this beautiful mountain. I thank you for the moisture you've delivered to us, and of course, ask for more. Be with our service personnel in state and abroad. Comfort them as they're away from their families. Keep them safe. We ask that you bring them back to us. As the council tonight considers the business before the city of Cholo, I ask that you give each member a special blessing of wisdom. We might do and say things that are pleasing to you and are best for the city, the citizens of Cholo. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Critten. Appreciate that. First item we have is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. Seeing that nobody moved, I'll close the call to the public and come back to our items of agenda here. Tonight, we have the presentation of the State of the City. I appreciate each council member who's going to share with us tonight in helping present this. The start of the new year is a perfect time to reflect on what we accomplished last year and to share our plans for 2019. Your City Council has identified four major priorities that drive our policies and decisions. One, to preserve and repair our infrastructure, especially roads, water, and sewer. Two, to pursue community and economic development. Three, to improve our quality of life, including better safety, education, and opportunities. And four, to maintain an organization with solid and stable leadership. Our major accomplishments over the past year, our financial health and outlook, and our future plans consistently support these four principles and priorities. Our city's economic outlook continues, a slow, steady upward trend, as evidenced monthly sales tax revenues in 2018 showed increases over 2017, with retail comprising almost 75% of the total collections. We also saw increased construction activity in both the residential and commercial sectors. Our longstanding policy of fiscal conservatism and saving money for future allows us every year to complete the important projects that we set out. 2018 is no exception, and we completed several key projects to maintain and improve existing infrastructure.
In sewer projects, we replaced a sewer collection system throughout older subdivisions, Sierra Vista and Westwood, and extended a major sewer main on the east side of South Wyman Road of Hidden Way to Ellsworth Road. In water projects, we upsized a major water line along West McNeil from Fox Canyon to the Dusa Clubs and the water main along East McNeil. In road projects, we approved the water and road system along Eighth Street to connect Whipple and Wilford, made road improvements to East Thornton and the streets of Westwood subdivision, and used in grant funds, construction, new sidewalks on East McNeil between Eighth Street and Ninth Street, and replaced the sidewalks on Eighth Street from East McNeil to the Dusa Clubs. And the Department of Transportation completed widening US-60 Dusa Clubs from Straight Route 77 into section east to Forty Street to ease traffic and congestion and improve access. With our safety in mind, we improved emergency response times across southern Navajo County by adding the Pine Top Lakeside Police Department and Pine Top Fire Department to our dispatch centers. The consolidation system now handles 911 calls for two police agencies, four fire districts, and one ambulance service.
To improve your quality of life, another council priority, our employees are dedicated to providing a variety of events, including sports leagues, kids and family events, holiday happenings, and musics in our parks, library, and aquatic center. To celebrate our May 1953 incorporation, we held our annual party along with the barbecue throwdown. The popular competition drew barbecue pitmasters from across the United States with savory tastings and day-long festivities. In the summer, our Fourth of July Parade and Freedom Fest drew spectators and participants from across the region. Although we had to cancel the fireworks display because of high fire danger, we expanded children's activities and vendors in high participation. Our signature Cholo shines for the holiday illuminated our city with sparkling Christmas lights and holiday spirit. We had one of our best Christmas lights parade with many participants and spectators. In improved amenities and attractions, we built four outdoor pickleball courts at the city campus on East McNeil and relocated our historical jail to the grounds of the city hall. At the city park, we installed new playground structures, improved landscaping, and reconfigured the parking area west of the Little League Field and paved the dog park parking lot. We also researched the feasibility of developing a convention, events, and sports facility in Cholo, a long-term vision to make our city destination.
In terms of our financial position, the council and staff are committed to using your taxpayer dollars wisely. Our conservative fiscal policy ensures we have the necessary funds to meet your needs and withstand economic downturns. We never spend more than we've budgeted. We also save money to pay for at least a portion of larger, more expensive projects in future years. Our department managers share that vision by carefully analyzing every program to ensure efficiency. We're proud to say our fiscal policies have allowed Cholo to survive difficult economic times and see modest growth. We believe in retaining local control over the city's budget, which must be balanced according to state law. To protect you and our city's assets, we have two permanent mandates: to maintain at least a minimum of $1 million in reserves and to require a supermajority of vote of the City Council to approve any tax increase. Our cost-conscious approach supports our pledge to deliver full lease and public work services, community events, and recreational activities to meet your needs and interests. We offered our 20th Annual Free Project Clean Suite Beautification Program and provided a Christmas tree recycling site. We again cosponsored the annual record-breaking electronic waste collection event and added a hazardous waste component this year with assistance from nine public and private partners.
In pursuit of economic development and business growth, we welcomed two new businesses, Goodwill Industries and a standalone Starbucks. We're excited to see that Culver's Restaurant and a combination Dunkin' Bascom Robbins outlet will soon break ground. Summit Healthcare Regional Medical Center continues a major expansion project with three new buildings to house medical offices, ambulatory surgery center, retail pharmacy, administrative offices, all expected to open this summer. Votique Care, the commuter airline, continues to fly daily between Cholo and Phoenix with high passenger usage. The airline was awarded a new four-year contract by the federal government to continue serving Cholo. We're proud of our heritage of bringing hope and the prospect of a better life through our community projects and holiday assistance programs. Our employees and community volunteers spent several hours making the dog park more accessible and attractive in observance of the Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service, an annual service day we've held since 2009. We also supported the Sixth Annual Community Fast of Compassion, helping our community raise a record $20,000 for individuals and families in need during the holidays. We thank everyone who donated their time, money, and efforts.
Looking ahead to 2019, our plans include Phase Four of our Fairway Park project to replace water lines from Mugion to Cooley, extending the sewer main on the west side of White Mountain Road from Fawn Brook to the signal light at Park Pineway Plaza, improving the sewer system in the Camp Town area on McNeil, extending Thornton, that's a city street, from Central to Sixth Street to create a new access, replacing the sewer main along West Cooley between Central and Eighth Avenue, adding sidewalks on the north side of East McNeil behind the shopping center where Cow Ranch is located, replacing the sewer main along West McNeil between Fourth and Eighth Avenue, adding sidewalks on the west side of Central from East McNeil to Pine Haven, installing field lighting at Nicholas Homestead Park, adding Ramadas at the Little League Field and Dog Park, installing newly designed entryway signs welcoming visitors to Cholo. We will continue to collaborate with other communities to provide added value services to our regions such as much-needed transit system and supporting tourism marketing efforts.
We attribute much of our success to the able assistance of our employees and volunteers who deliver their best to serve you. Our advisory committees, senior patrol, and library friends all provide their services for free, saving taxpayers' dollars. Come volunteer your time, talents, or materials to better our community. We invite you to join us on April 27th for our Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service project. Or participate in our civic process when the council and staff meet to discuss next year's budget. Every budget meeting held here in council chambers is open to the public. We begin the process in January with a town hall-style meeting designed specifically for citizens' input next Thursday, January 24th at 6:00 p.m. We'll hold another budget hall for public input on Thursday, April 4th. The entire budget calendar is posted on our website. Your City Council thanks you for your confidence in our ability to handle city affairs, a sentiment shared by your fellow Americans. Polls show that for more than a decade, Americans continue to trust local government more than state governments or the federal government. Because the council and our staff are dedicated to remain accessible to you, we welcome your feedback. We are responsive and transparent, and we work together as a group in a nonpartisan way.
Thank you. The political and social landscape has gone through many changes over the past year. Let that not deter us from supporting each other, focusing on the positive, and enriching the world as we embark on the new year. Let us leave behind a legacy of a better city for tomorrow and for future generations. We thank all of you, our citizens, and wish you and your family the best of health, peace, and happiness in 2019. Thank you for all you do to make our community a wonderful place to live, and may God continue to bless and prosper our community. Thank you, and thank you so much, citizens. Thank you, council, for helping. Next item is the Consent Calendar, item seven, Consideration of Amendment. Is there anything that needs to be pulled or reviewed? Where I read these? We have a consideration of amendment to professional service contract with Armstrong Consultants for Runway 0624 Rehabilitation Project and the consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting, January 2nd, 2018. We have a motion by Councilmember Leach, second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass. Seven to zero. Next item is New Business. Item 8A has been a poll for, it will be available at another meeting here. If any of you have liked to talk a little bit more with staff, you may do so, but they have made some changes to this that they're still working on to get that a little bit better than what was proposed prior, so there are some good resolutions coming forward. Next item is item 8B, Consideration of a Non-Commercial Ground Lease with Rory W. Ray Trust. Mr. Barr.
City of Cholo entered into a non-commercial ground lease with DH Ortega Construction on September 19th, 2005 for a 27,200 square foot parcel located at 3280 Corporate Way at the Cholo Regional Airport. DH Ortega Construction subsequently built multi-unit hangar base and entered into various sublease agreements with tenants for some of the hangar base. Exact Aviation LLC purchased a portion of the hangar and entered into a ground lease on June 21st, 2011 for a 3280 Corporate Way Unit C at $0.27.75 per square foot. Rory W. Ray Trust dated February 23rd, 2011 has purchased Unit C from Exact Aviation LLC and has requested a new non-commercial ground lease for the new airport ground lease policy recently approved by the council. The terms and conditions of the agreement consist of the new monthly lease rate of $0.30 per square foot or $110.50 plus taxes, insurance, and any applicable monthly user fees. The agreement includes an annual Consumer Price Index, CPI, increase. Rory W. Ray Trust is responsible for paying all utility costs. The length of the agreement is 25 years, beginning January 15th, 2019, with the option to extend the agreement for five additional five-year periods at an increased rate for a total lease period of 49 years. Staff has revised the standard form contract by removing portions of the document that dealt with building facility on the ground since Rory W. Ray Trust is purchasing an existing hangar. Staff recommends approving a non-commercial ground lease with Rory W. Ray Trust dated February 23rd, 2011 and authorizing the mayor to sign the lease on behalf of the city. Fiscal impact anticipated revenue is $1,326 annual ground lease plus taxes, subject to increases stipulated in the lease. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Look for a motion. Councilmember Critten?
I move to approve a non-commercial ground lease with Rory W. Ray Trust dated February 23rd, 2011 and authorize the mayor to sign the lease on behalf of the city.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor. Any opposed? See that pass, seven to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item we have is a consideration of award of purchase of lease vehicles. Chief Shalick.
Mayor and City Council, this is a little bit longer, so I'm going to take some time to explain some of the little intricacies that are involved with this. On December 2018, the City of Cholo solicited a request for proposals, an RFP, to purchase police vehicles. The RFP was delivered to the Ford dealerships in Cholo that are able to provide police package vehicles. Two companies, Cholo Ford and Tates, submitted completed bid packets on January 9th, 2019. The following were the bid results, and this is where I'm going to kind of add a little bit more to help you with this. There are a total of, I believe, 14 vehicles altogether. The two Ford Expeditions, these are going to be taking the place of our K-9 vehicles that are outdated. There are larger vehicles, the smaller vehicles, which would be the Ford Interceptors, are too small to handle the load that's going to be inside and outside. So the two Ford Expeditions, Cholo Ford, $80,412.72, Tates, $89,832.70. The one Ford F-150 Crew Cab pickup is a replacement for a vehicle, and I believe, and don't hold me to this, but I think it's a '70s model pickup truck that we have in our evidence section, so this will be taking place of that. The Cholo Ford bid is $33,220.34, Tates' bid was $33,855.0 cents. The two Ford Interceptors, and they're broken out this way because there's other Ford Interceptors, the two Ford Interceptors are the detective models. These are not going to have the decals, the lights on them, and things like that, that the other car will have pushbars and things. It won't have that kind of equipment on it. These two Ford Interceptors, the Cholo Ford price is $72,036.88. Price adjusted for city sales tax is $70,704.10. Tates is $71,306.98. The remaining Ford Interceptors, I'm sorry, the second portion of this, the seven Ford Interceptors, these are all patrol interceptors. Included on the interceptors is also the one for GOHS. We talked about that, getting the grant from that a couple of weeks ago, and this is part of that bid process. So that one GOHS vehicle is included on the seven Ford Interceptors. For a total price at Cholo Ford, $252,000.129.8, and Tates is $254,084.88. The two other ones are the two Ford Interceptors, and we broke these out for this reason. These two are going to the senior patrol. Obviously, as much, as many miles they put on it, we tried to do something a little bit different with this, and I'll tell you why. The Cholo Ford is $72,036.88, price adjusted, $70,704.10. Tates is $71,306.98. Now, this comes, the package actually comes from Ford dealership. It's first year that's given in the Ford Interceptors is the hybrid model. The hybrid, according to the dealerships that we talked to, both Tates and Cholo Ford, is within two to four years, we'd get the money back, the extra $3,600 approximately that we would be spending on the interceptor, is the hybrid model, in gas savings. So again, we keep these vehicles anywhere from eight to 10 years. So if we get that money back in two to four years, we've got four or five years of savings on those vehicles. We have never used those vehicles before, so we don't know how they're going to react up here in the cold weather or our high altitude. So what we want to try to do is get two of them, if at all possible, and that's, again, under your discretion, is the two hybrids, the adjusted price is $79,523.90 as opposed to the $72,036.88. So I wanted to make sure that was there. So again, I did put the note down here, Cholo Ford offers the interceptor as a standard vehicle or a hybrid vehicle. A standard Ford option is with a both conventional or an electric motor. The total cost for the 14 vehicles that we're talking about is $509,000.509.835,090, or $517,322.92 with the two hybrid Fords, the two hybrid Ford Interceptors. In addition to the vehicle, in addition to this price, vehicle wraps for eight black and white patrol cars and decal packages for 11 vehicles will cost approximately $16,425, bringing in the total of $526,260.90, or $533,747.92 for the two hybrid with the two hybrid Interceptors. All 14 vehicles must be outfitted with police-related emergency equipment, lights, radio, prisoner screens, et cetera, for a total cost of $205,937. The cost for outfitting is based on state contract. The outfitting will be done by Arizona Emergency Products. The city received a grant, this is the part, the city received a grant from the governor's office of highway safety for $47,000, which will be used as a reimbursement for purchasing and outfitting one of the Ford Interceptors. Delivery of the Expeditions and the F-150 pickup is expected to take place 10 to 12 weeks, within 10 to 12 weeks. Delivery of the interceptor is expected to be after July 1st, 2019. The time lapse of the Interceptors is based on Ford's 2020 production run, as the 2019 production run has already been closed. Staff recommends awarding the purchase of all vehicles to the Cholo Ford. Funds from the fiscal year 2019 budget will be used to purchase the Expeditions and the Ford F-150 pickup, and approximately $72,000 will be carried forward to next year's budget. The remaining balance will be programmed into the 2020 budget, and I believe in April, April 19th of 2018, a study session was, we talked about a lease purchase for the 12 to 14 vehicles at that time. With this option, if we budget it right, we will not be actually leasing the vehicles, we'll be purchasing them outright, which would give us a savings if we're talking about the interest rate on it, approximately $50,000. Is that pretty close?
It's a little less than that because of the timeframe right now.
Oh, that's okay. So better, we've got a better rate on it. And that's what I have, and I'm available for questions. I do have a couple of other things, just to make sure. The existing, some of the existing vehicles that we do have will be repurposed in other parts of the city, because we run the heck out of cars, so they'll be put over to other places that are not running them that hard, such as the city engineering, the airport, courtesy car, et cetera, things like that. We'll try to use those for, and I've already talked about the Expeditions and Truck. So I'm available for questions.
Okay, so Councilwoman Kukavas.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we're $72,000 below budget for this year, and is that based on the lease purchase option or the cash price?
Mayor and Council, Kukavas, I think that's $72,000 we rolled over into the next budget year, is what we're talking about, because we're buying the Expeditions this year under this year's budget, as well as the Ford F-150 pickup truck out of this year's budget. The Interceptors, which is the bulk of the purchase, go into next year, so the $72 goes, rolls over to that year, and then we'll budget that year.
In other words, we had $250,000 in this year's budget, but talked about doing a lease purchase and put $250 in the next, in this year's budget and the next two-year budget, two budget years. So under this plan, we'll pay them off in the 2020 budget.
Councilmember Critten?
Okay, so we just got a initial budget presentation. Has all of these costs been, are they going to be included in the budget we're going to be looking at?
Yes, they will. They'll either be, it'll be programmed in to pay them off if we run into a budget issue. We all, it'll be programmed in the budget as a loan for one-third of the price of these vehicles, but we expect that we'll be budgeting to pay them off in July.
Councilwoman Kukavas.
I see Mr. Hatch is here. Guy, can you come up and speak to the hybrid option and what the research is telling you as far as the altitude and weather?
You had to call on me, didn't you? No, I appreciate it. The sad thing is not a lot of specs have been put out on the 2020. It's all new. The hybrid is new. We're barely seeing pictures of it. We're barely understanding what it's about, so I can't even answer the questions yet on the hybrid and what, if it's going to be good in high altitude, if it's going to perform to these guys' liking for what it needs to be performed for. So, I mean, it's, it's all new. I mean, the whole body, the interior, the whole vehicle is completely new, redesigned, and that's why we've got to push it to July for delivery date.
Are the hybrids the only cars that would be 2020?
Yes. The Explorers, the complete line of Explorers will be 2020. The Expedition and the F-150 will 19th.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, what is the expected life of the battery pack on those? There's a warranty on them, I'm sure. Is that published now?
Typically, on a, on a hybrid, you've got 100,000-mile battery warranty pack on it. But again, I'm going to revert back to the specs. The warranty has not been published on that yet, on the 2020. Again, it's, it's so new, we are not even, I mean, it just came out in Detroit Auto Show yesterday to tell us, and we've, we've got build sheets on it, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
I do, Chief.
Councilmember Rossop.
For Chief, you know, and I understand, I wish I would have, or I could see what vehicles you're changing now, what the mileage is on them and everything else, you know, and just understand how worn out they are. I know from now on, you know, usually they last a lot more than just 100,000 miles. I just, I just purchased a vehicle, and so I think all my other vehicles has got a thing near almost 200,000 miles on them, so, and all straight highway miles, never off the road. But my question is, I wish I could see exactly, you know, where we're at on the mileage. my question is, I wish I could see exactly, you know, where we're at on the mileage, what we're, uh, replacing here. Because right now, it just, it just kind of shows us that we're replacing cars, but I don't know what are other ones. And we haven't seen, uh, even when I go through the background check of, um, expenditures at the end of the month and everything else that we do, I don't see a lot of repairs. So I didn't know, are, do you have one or two vehicles that really have a lot of repairs? Or are they just standard repairs? Um, I mean, this is a lot of money for, for people to swallow, uh, to buy these vehicles. To make sure that we explain to them that this is why we're spending the money, is because all these miles, maintenance, you know, is atrocious. Um, whenever we chase people down the street, that we can't catch up to them and stuff like that. So, you know, I just, I'd like to have a little bit more information on that.
If you just, uh, I've got a list of them right here in front of me, so I'm going to kind of go through some of the ones that we're talking about. So a two thousand and eight Chevy Impala, a hundred and six thousand miles on it, has about fourteen thousand dollars. It's a detective swing car. Not utilized that much, but fourteen thousand dollars in maintenance just alone on that one. The two thousand and four Chevy, which is our K-nine pool car, it only has about eighty-five thousand miles on it. Eighteen thousand dollars in service thing on that one. But again, in oh four, we're starting to lose, we don't have parts for those vehicles. They're not producing the parts for those, some of those vehicles.
What was it, excuse me, I apologize.
Two thousand and four, eighty-five thousand.
Two thousand and four was the second one?
The second one.
And what was the first one?
It was two thousand and eight Chevy Impala.
Okay.
Okay. So again, some of these will be repurposed over. This is, that's one of the ones. In fact, the Chevy Impala, the K-nine pool car is going out to MPC to our recruits out there, so they'll be repurposed out there. Chevy Impala, two thousand and three Chevy Impala Swing goes to auction, has a hundred and twenty-six thousand miles on it, to almost twenty-three thousand dollars in maintenance cost on that one. A two thousand and eight Chevy Impala, Impala, a hundred and six thousand miles. It'll have, it has twelve thousand dollars in maintenance that's going to the city. A two thousand and eight Chevy Impala, a hundred and ten thousand miles, this one's been totaled. Has twenty-four thousand dollars in repair service just now and maintenance cost. We, and again, it's been totaled, so we're not going to be repairing that one. A two thousand and eight Chevy Impala, senior patrol vehicle, a hundred and forty-six thousand miles, has about twenty-five thousand dollars in maintenance cost on that one. A two thousand and nine Chevy Impala, a hundred and one thousand miles. Again, this will be, this is one of our swing cars, eighteen thousand dollars in maintenance cost. A two thousand and four Dodge Crew Cab has a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles. Not bad on the maintenance, only about seventy-five hundred dollars in maintenance on that one, but again, a two thousand and four model. A two thousand and ten Chevy Tahoe, this is the one that we got from a, uh, I believe this is the seizure one. A hundred and forty-two thousand miles, fifteen thousand dollars in maintenance on that one. A nineteen ninety, this is the pickup truck, the nineteen ninety-nine Chevy pickup truck utility, been around for a while. This was a seizure, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, almost a hundred and thirty-three thousand miles, and that one's going to auction. A two thousand and seven Chevy Impala Swing Car, a hundred and twenty-six thousand miles, twenty-four thousand dollars in maintenance. A two thousand and four Dodge Durango, this is a hundred and six thousand miles, it's twenty-four thousand dollars in maintenance. That's going to auction. A two thousand Chevy, Chevy Impala, a hundred and two thousand miles, twenty-five thousand dollars. That's in, in maintenance. That's going to auction. A two thousand and seven Chevy Suburban, this is the Scott Nicholas, uh, this is his kid, the K-nine car. That was another seizure that we got. I said again, a hundred and forty-two, a hundred and forty-three thousand miles, twenty-eight thousand dollars, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in maintenance. A two thousand and six Chevy Impala, senior patrol car, two, a hundred and twenty-six thousand miles on it, twenty-four thousand dollars, and that's also going to auction. So that's where we're at with the ones that we're replacing, and again, repurposing some of those other ones. But they're not all just going to auction. They're going to be, some of them will be repurposed that are actually working okay. In fact, the Dodge Durango is one of the cars, it's, it's down getting painted and going to engineering.
Councilmember Crennan.
Are these maintenance charges, including tires, oil changes, and the standard operating things that happen to cars?
That's correct.
So it's including tires, it's not just breakdowns?
Yeah, that's correct. And usually those, some of the ones that are about ten years old, run about fourteen thousand dollars max on some of the major stuff that happens to them, and the rest of it's all oil changes and tires and things like that.
Councilmember Lee.
Um, almost should put an hour meter on these cars, shouldn't you? Because you're saying wear and tear mileage, but some of them could be running ten hours a day.
Well, they say about two-point-five hours for every mileage you have on it. So you figure that a car that you buy out there, that's not running, that is, has a hundred and ten thousand or two-hundred thousand as a Toyota. If that was a police car, it would probably have close to five hundred thousand engine hours on that car if you use the, uh, the computations that we have.
So my point was, some of the ones you were saying eighty-some thousand or whatever, low mileage, but is it a police car? So it could be double that as far as hours on the motor.
And sometimes you would probably triple the one, especially the K-nine, which is going to be running all the time. So that does not stop at all.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and, and I, and I have to agree with that, you know, but, um, you know, also, I have a Ford truck, uh, with my company, and I run the engine constantly all the time, too. Uh, but we have, we have utility companies and every other places that, uh, won't even let you talk about it, change out your vehicle unless you're over a couple hundred thousand miles. Uh, we, we run our trucks, gas running probably seven, eight hours a whole day, especially in the summertime, trying to keep the coolness in, in the wintertime, we can keep our coffee hot, you know how that is. And so, uh, I understand the hour meter, but it's not, we have, there's companies out there still have the hour meter on them, but runs them for over two-hundred thousand miles. I just, you know, a lot of low miles, I know, um, I, I just, I have a hard time with, with that type of low miles. Uh, I mean, the average, uh, cost of your maintenance and everything else is, is probably pretty much regular maintenance. I mean, uh, what we, what we have with, uh, where I work at is the exact same thing. We, you know, sometimes we go in there, we go in maybe a year without doing anything, oil changes and tires, then person will have a hub go out or something like that. But, uh, you know, the good thing is, uh, the Ford, the Ford bucket truck really, it lasts a long time and runs all the time. We have to have down riggers down and, and have our boom, the place our boom and everything else, so there's a lot of different things. I just, I understand what you're trying to do, and I understand, but I just, some of these, I think they're just still got some good miles in them and everything else. I, I think back in two thousand and nine, uh, when it first came on, I know you wasn't the chief then. Um, but we talked about changing out these vehicles, but doing it more like five or six at a time instead of fourteen at a time, just to make it a little bit easier for people or public can swallow, uh, what we're spending on, on vehicles, knowing that it's, it's out there to protect the, the public, uh, you're out there to, uh, twenty-four, seven, you're, you're always there, and we, and we know that. And, uh, but it just, we just want to make sure that people understand what, if, if we okay this, this is, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars. So we got, you know, over half of it, some this year and then half of it next. But we still, you know, that's still a lot of money for them to swallow at one time, especially fourteen vehicles. Now, the question I have is with, um, the, the interceptors going to the senior patrol. Are they, if you're going to test the hybrids and everything else, are they going to be able to go, are you going to drive them at a hundred miles an hour to see how they do? Or sixty miles an hour? Are, you know, are you going to practice chasing? What are you going to do with this? Because I, it's hard for me to imagine some senior patrols doing that, but, you know, it just.
Well, and, and again, to answer your questions, um, Mayor and City Council, the, uh, the hybrids are going to be tested out. We're going to actually drive them. We're going to take them out and try to drive them ourselves. Um, the difference between the normal wear and tear on your vehicles that are running, they're out there, they're on scene, and police response or pulling people over, um, the quick, the, the quick acceleration, the pressure that puts on that engine, um, the quick deceleration on that, over, over time, that's just really wears those engines down. A lot faster than having it running, and I, I understand what you're saying with yours, and I agree, is some of those vehicles, if they were just idling and not being run like that, not being run in quote-unquote pursuit driving tactics, uh, I'd agree, they probably would last a lot longer. They really would. Um, but again, you take, take a look at what we have, um, and the pursuit tactics that we have, it does take the wear and tear on some of those vehicles. So like the K-nine vehicle, it's a low miles vehicle, I agree. But at the same time, that's probably one of the most unreliable vehicles that we have, because it's broken down half-time. In fact, we've got to do some work on it just to rotate it out to NPC. So we will be doing some maintenance on that one. Um, I, I just got to make sure I covered all your questions regarding what your concerns were for the vehicle, or the vehicles themselves. But this also purchases for the next couple of years. We're not going to, we're not coming to council next year or the year after that to purchase vehicles. This was supposed to be a three-year thing that we started back when, and we, we couldn't get things lined up in time, so it kind of pushed us forward. It actually worked out to our benefit to be able to use the budget to buy it outright instead of, uh, of the money on the lease itself. But we're not going to be purchasing another vehicle for probably another couple of years unless something major happens. If something major happens, such as an accident or something like that, absolutely no one's going to get hurt. Um, but a, an accident like that where we have to replace a vehicle, then we probably come back for a replacement via our, our insurance or their insurance. So something like that.
Okay, I, okay, thank you. But the question I have, I guess, Ed, you can ask. To just to clarify, half of this is going to be paid in this year's budget and half of it for next year's budget? So theoretically, we're buying for next year, but you, it'll be two more years after, or three years after that?
It's about a third in this year has been budgeted, and two-thirds will be in next year's. We're really talking about the same thing, because you were talking four to five vehicles a year. This is a little bit of a catch-up, because during, after the recession, we were buying one or two vehicles. So that's why we, we've hit this situation where we need to get fourteen at once. And after, after two more years, we'll start buying four or five each year.
I, you know, I just remember back in oh nine when we talked about that, because it was just, we were getting bombarded, and we wanted to make sure. I just want to make sure that people understand that we're paying three-quarters of a million dollars, and some of it's going to be this year's budget, some of it's going to be next year's budget, and that hopefully we won't have to do another one for another three years, and then, you know, we can, I can swallow that a little bit better. I just wish that, uh, government thing for forty thousand was about seven hundred thousand.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yeah, uh, my question is, will there be enough variance in the use of these vehicles that we could expect that they don't all need to come offline at the same time?
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Kelly, on this one here, there's different, uh, job descriptions, and as you can see, one was a detective car. Uh, had a lot less miles on it, but it was an older car. Uh, some of these are going to investigations. Some of them are going to senior patrol, which they drive their cars every single day. Um, and when they're here, they don't stop. They keep going, which is great for us, and I'm not, I'm not arguing that point. Some of the patrol cars, they work four days a week. Sometimes they're on vacation, so they're not going to be using theirs at the same rate. Canines won't be using theirs at the same rate. So when it comes back to getting back on the schedule or getting three to five cars, we'll be back on that schedule again and be able to forecast where we're at with those cars as it keeps going forward. And, and if you do choose to do the hybrids, we're hoping the hybrids do work out. We, we won't know, but if we do, and they do work out, and that's, again, future savings for us. So that's another thing to consider as well.
Let me understand on the hybrid, the theory is basically, whether the type of hybrid that when you are either stopped or that the engine completely will stop, so we're not doing as much idling would be, and as soon as it accelerates, it quits and you're going. So it would help on some of the idling, some of the things that, that nature.
Correct.
If we could get Mr. Hatch to give us a better warranty, you know, bumper to bumper, a hundred thousand dollar warranty, it'd save quite a bit of money for us, you know, here. And stuff that way, all right. You know, what's your take, Chief, on the hybrid, you know, councils? Do we want to try a couple of hybrids to see if it's, uh, something, you know, down the road? And, you know, if it's something that pans out good, it is a savings, you know, for what we can do. I think it may be worth looking at, what's your feelings? Councilmember Hatch.
I think we need to, uh, gain some experience in that field. And this is an assessment period, the way I look at it. Uh, might prove out to be something that we should have done earlier if it had been a proven technology. But, uh, I think that going with the hybrid would be a good idea, to at least give ourselves a feel for what we're going to get as far as performance.
Councilmember Kelly.
Well, I just would be thinking that a dealer or a manufacturer would be optimistic in the fuel savings category. We're talking about, before we could get hurt on that, they'd have to be off dramatically in their estimates. And what little I have read about, because I haven't experienced any of these cars myself, that as far as acceleration, you got that battery pack pushing you and a small engine combined, whatever. You're going to get good acceleration out of that car. And we're not trying to imagine Duke's a Hazard Pursuits, I hope. And, uh, the radio, uh, back a hundred years ago when I worked, was always felt to be pretty much faster than hottest hot rod on the street. So I, I would love to see us try a couple. I'm glad you're not coming and say, let's try the fleet. Uh, you know, you would have a hard time getting me on board with that without a lot of test results and warranties that are extraordinary. Now, if I understood the answer, the battery pack is expected to be warranted for a hundred thousand miles? Is that what I heard you say? And it, you don't really care if that happens in one year or twelve or ten or six or what? I, there's got to be a year end on it, I would guess.
There's going to be a year. There's, there's going to be a year timeline on that for sure. But if I, if I go back to the hybrids that are already in Ford's fleet now in, in outright sales, it's, there are warrantied up to a hundred thousand miles, and some are at sixth years, some are at seven years, some are at ten years. So I wouldn't know exactly the year that it's going to be warranted, but I do know the mileage. If they follow suit with all their other hybrids that are in Ford's fleet, you're going to have it up to a hundred thousand miles. Now, it being a police interceptor, that might change it a little, but again, we don't have those statistics yet. But, but in saying that, I can tell you, and whether you go hybrid or conventional, um, I can tell you that the testing has been done on the hybrid. They wouldn't put it as in a police interceptor without millions and millions of miles on this thing tested to prove what these gentlemen need to do each and every day.
Thank you.
And women, excuse me.
Well, I'm sure the council doesn't want to get into the kind of management that would detail, but it would seem to me that some of our patrol officers auto-experience these cars instead of just issuing them to the senior patrol and then asking them for a little feedback on what they think. I mean, their opinion would be important if they're driving them day after day. But as they would get evaluated, it would help us know what we want to do on the next purchase and the one after that, I'm sure. So when I first looked at this, I went, wow, what are we doing? Now, will we want fourteen vehicles next year and fourteen the year after? And I'm hearing a clear answer is no, that's not happening. This is a fourteen-vehicle purchase over two years. And there will be enough, if I understood your answer, I'm restating it my way, difference in the application and the use of these vehicles, that they won't all time out at the same time. And it will allow us to go back to the routine of attempted budgeting and purchasing annually that which is required to keep a, a reasonable and current fleet. Is, is that a fair statement?
I'd say, yes, sir, it is.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor.
I got one, one, one last question to you.
Okay.
What would be the benefit of having one hybrid or two hybrid?
Again, Mayor and Council, uh, the two hybrid was for the, um, senior patrol. And exactly what Councilmember Kelly said is so that we can take one of those cars and run it down to the track and have our officers and our driving instructors drive it and see really what it can do. And while the other one's still out on senior patrol, still working. So the idea was to put two over there. It gives them a balance of the two, and they can always have the same exact car, same exact feel. Um, and we, we've kind of talked about, do you give them one and not the other? But they are different, and in the way that they run, they're a little different, so the expectations would be a little different. And we didn't want to upset the apple cart, so to speak, on that portion of it. We wanted to keep it the same, uh, for the senior patrol. Does that make sense?
So you're installer, is going to install little meters where they can take it real down, real slow down Main Street?
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas.
I move to authorize the purchase of fourteen police vehicles, including-
I move to authorize the purchase of 14 police vehicles, including two hybrid Ford interceptors from Cholo Ford in amount not to exceed $533,747.92, and upfitting the vehicles through Arizona Emergency Products for a total of $205,937, and approve the associated budget transfers.
I have a motion seconded by Councilmember Leach. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all of them in favor? Any opposed? See that, that's seven to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Hatch, be in here and answering questions.
Mayor, one second. We want to, we appreciate your, the business from the city and from the Police Department, I'll tell you. Thank you for the council, councilwoman, councilman. We do appreciate it. Cholo Ford's here to support and continue business with the city, the Police Department, and also the community, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item we have is a summary of current events. Look the council members for summary of current events. Councilmember Crittenen.
I would like to remind everybody that tomorrow at 11:30 is the White Mountain Business Owners' Roundtable Meeting. Uh, it is, used to be at Torian, this time it's going to be at Solterra. And, uh, if you have a business, uh, you want to go interface, you want to go, uh, express, uh, things about your business and promote it and everything, this is a wonderful place to go. White Mountain Business Owners' Roundtable, Solterra Senior Center at 11:30 tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Tended a, uh, meeting for Meals and Wheels and Senior Center. Just want to update everybody on the Senior Center Meals and Wheels. Uh, it's, everything is going great. Uh, they have a new menu, uh, they got, uh, a lot of good food being served, especially this time of the year when it's cold outside and you want to just stop in and have something for seven bucks, you can have a, a really nice meal, and you can be in and out and get warmed up, but, uh, there's some, uh, nice changes going on. Uh, we're serving people and, uh, NACOG is, uh, active with us, and, uh, so we're getting a lot of meals out there for, uh, people that really need them, and, and that's one of the things that, uh, the city is, is helped with, and, uh, we like to keep that going, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Just look forward, uh, we have, uh, legislative days, uh, Thursday down at the State Capitol where local, uh, council people here of the White Mountains will be traveling down and meeting with our local, uh, legislative people at the Capitol, so I'll look forward to that on Thursday. This time we'll turn the tide of city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. We just, uh, a couple of things to report. We want to thank everybody for their patience as our crews dealt with snow removal and icy conditions over the past couple of weeks. Our employees, especially those in public works in the Police Department, did a excellent job, and they worked diligently around the clock to ensure our safety. We've, we've begun the process to prepare the next year's fiscal 20, fiscal year 2020 budget. We are holding a town hall budget meeting specifically for citizen input on January 24th at 6:00 PM here at the council chambers. All budget meetings are open to the public, and our budget calendar is on our website at cholowaz.gov. And as you know, the library hosts a lot of events throughout the month. One of the events they're hosting this month is at 6:15 PM, um, on this Friday for adults to learn science and engineering behind NASA's Parker Solar Probe, the first spacecraft to touch the sun. The event features a virtual streaming presentation by Dr. William Rice, a NASA scientist, plus an individual activity to build, um, a spectroscope, and all materials are provided by NASA. As I mentioned, they have many events throughout the month, and you can check with the library on the other events that they have. And finally, our recreation department's selling tickets at $6 each for the daddy-daughter dance on Valentine, daddy-daughter Valentine's Dance. It's open to girls ages one through 13 on Friday, February 1st at the city campus gym. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Scheduling of meetings? Councilmember Kelly.
Well, I didn't mean to be on scheduling of meetings, but I just want to encourage the public to come for this opportunity to see an overview of the budget. And, uh, it, this meeting, I don't expect it will last an hour, and it's very informative, so please take time to come out and get up to steam on what's happening and where it's going and, and be interested. And we're looking for him, but it's your chance.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Any other on current events?
On scheduling of meetings, just let me remind, um, that the council has a joint meeting with the Cholo School Board on January 29th, that's a Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the city council, or at the city hall in the Duska Club's room. That's Tuesday, January 29th.
Thank you. Next item we need, a motion to move into executive session where we discuss negotiations here on, uh, the city campus as well as a development agreement, as well as the annual evaluation of a city manager and the executive, uh, session minutes of the December 4th meeting. I have a motion, sessioned by several councilpeople. At this time, I will move into executive session. Thank you for being here tonight.